All right, so we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Today is December 7th, 2018, 9 o'clock in the morning. We're here at Community Center at 3500 Edgewater Drive, Sebring, Florida, 33872. This is the Assessment Appeal Committee meeting. We will go through each appeal. We'll read off the description of the appeal and then we'll have some conversation and we will take a recommended action to either approve or deny the request. We'll start off with Appeal A, which is Property ID 1371A Romanowski Jr. Mr. Romanowski's appeal reads, "No improvements have been made. No streets, no drainage, no water or sewer. Property is useless and not sellable." That is the end of his request. I've provided some backup documentation for Romanowski's property. He has not paid since 2013's outstanding through 2018. Total amount due as of November was $2,079.50. Is there any discussion from the committee?
No, I guess my only question would be, I assume he knew what he was getting into when he bought the property?
Correct.
In that case, no other questions.
My feeling on this one was that if he bought the property for whatever reason, either to build on in the future or to develop or whatever, he understood, we have an assessment process in Sunland Lakes. It comes with the property, so I would say, well, he doesn't have a case.
I agree.
We all pay an assessment.
Right.
He can deed the lot back to the association, or he can try and sell it, or he can pay the assessment.
Right.
Those choices.
He also didn't state what he was asking for on this appeal, so... I guess we'll go ahead and take a consensus. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Of...
Favor of...
A favor of... What'll do in favor of approving, say aye.
I don't want to...
All opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Okay, so three, three unanimous, deny. Assessment Appeal B, Item B, Property ID 4160 and 4188, both pertaining to Alvaro Pinto. His appeal reads, "I am 80 years old and my wife is 72 years old. Both of us are retired, and my retirement is approximately $1,400 per month. This year, my wife had cancer and I have spent a lot of money on her medications. Also had to repair my house due to floods. I would appreciate your cooperation on this matter." Both appeals for both properties read the same. These are both vacant improved lots on a road with only the 2018 assessment outstanding, so I'm assuming that they are looking for some sort of waiver of the 2018 as there's no delinquent assessments outstanding. Any discussion?
I think without the delinquent assessment, if he's been current since he bought it, I would recommend that we give him an easement for 2018 only, for his assessment in 2018. And I don't know if we can put a word of caution in when we do that, but I would caution him that it's an undeveloped area. If he's saving that lot to build on or for his kids or something, then he should make arrangements because the assessment will be ongoing. Give him relief for this year and let him know the assessment is there every year. That's my opinion.
Well, as much as I would like to do something along those lines, I think you said a... Once you... If you give for one, you're gonna have to... Then you open yourselves for giving for everybody who has a hardship case.
Good point.
And as unfortunate as I... His circumstances are, I think we'd be going down the road that we shouldn't be going down if we were to give him a break.
Guess we'll go ahead and take a consensus again. We'll vote.
Yeah, this is opinion.
I do have, on the district's opinion, once again, we don't have any formal policy. We, I believe our Florida statute doesn't allow us to waive any sort of penalties or assessments for any case, so, once again, circumstance is unfortunate, so I would have to take that, that approach, from my opinion. I guess we'll go ahead and vote in favor of his request. All in favor, say aye. All opposed?
Nay.
Nay. So three nays, deny.
And that covers both properties.
Correct. Appeal C, Property ID 11657, Joel Thomas. The appeal reads, "The Improvement District has all the authorities to impose its fees for economic development. However, this property is a vacant land with a market value around $10,000 to $12,000. Without an assessment review, it becomes impossible for anybody to pay $40,000 assessment fee plus $897 in taxes to satisfy Sunland Lake District Board. I am retired, living on Social Security. I am unable to pay this bill. Please review and see if I am exempt... Exemption can be addressed." So this property is improved, it is on a road. The reasoning why the assessment is so high on this property, it really is pertaining to a bond issue. The bill provided shows that the bond issue hasn't been paid since 2007. The district's only allowed to impose delinquent assessments up to five years, so for five years, there's five years of assessments, everything else is bond issue on there, which, once again, the district's standpoint on this is we're just a third-party administrator. We collect and remit to the bank what we receive. We don't have any authority to waive or write off any sort of bond issues.
What's his option? To get out of this? Does he have any options to get out of this?
With the district, he really does not have any option for the bond. He could address this with the bondholder directly. I believe Mr. Thomas acquired this property through some sort of tax deed purchase. Looks like he may have, might have not done his due diligence in researching before he bought the property, but that would be his only remedy, is to go through the bondholder to see if they would give him some relief.
Just for background information, Omar, what is the bond issue? Someone got a bond to develop some of these properties?
Right. So the district sought out a bond in order to make improvements to these properties, such as the road infrastructure, the drainage, the water, sewer, and at that time, they were assessed the, you know, prorated fee based off everyone who received that improvement, right? So his bond issue could have been $10,000 to start, and every year, it's assessed a certain...
Sure.
Certain assessment.
And in this particular case, there is an actual, there's two of them, a set of these properties, which, that means that there was improvement done with road and drainage, and then later on, there is another, it was actually a loan and everyone was looking to a bond, but there was another improvement, maybe the water or underground, like things like that. So this is an unfortunate case where the lien is much higher than the assessed value because of both forms.
So his option is really just to walk away, right? I mean, that's his best option. It can't be worth $40,000, right, the property? Do we ever make, I mean, tell them what their options are?
Probably not. It wouldn't... His options are, our opinion of his options, are not anything based legally or...
So we don't make a recommendation or anything like that?
There's no statute.
We just tell them, yeah, you're nay on their appeal?
Yeah.
Correct.
I think that's all we can do.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I'm gonna recommend we take a vote based off... He really didn't specify what he was looking for. It looks like he was just looking for some sort of exemption.
Wow, but one other question. So we're gonna keep charging him $350 every year, and we know we're not gonna get that money?
Correct. The district continues to assess that.
Well, the district had some actions, and I may not have this exactly correct, but because of all the undeveloped property that developers had owned and hadn't paid the assessments on and everything, didn't the district start reclaiming some of those through a process that's similar to foreclosure and reclaiming some of that property so it could be sold at a reasonable cost to someone to build or developer to develop? So he can walk away, or he can spearhead a movement to build 20 houses around there and spread that around and further develop Sunland Lake, but we can't. I don't think it's up to us to tell him that.
Right. So we're gonna continue to charge the guy?
Well, until it gets so far that the district goes through that process and gets the property.
Right, and this is a typical property that goes through the county's sheeting process, so he's not paying Sunland Lake, he's not paying the bond, he's most likely not paying the county. The county at some point will put this up for tax deed sale. No one will buy it at that point because of the outstanding district assessments, and then it'll sheet to the county where it's free and clear, and the county will put it back up for sale. So it goes through that, it's almost a six-year process from start to finish if he decides to go down that road. So let's take a vote based off providing him with an exemption. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay?
Nay.
Nay, denied. Appeal, Item D, Property ID 7659, Jerome Harold. Mr. Harold's appeal reads, "This request was already submitted on a letter on August 23rd, 2018. Now we are submitting it again on our appeal form. Please see a copy of the tax letter attached." The letter reads, "I, Jerome Harold, pastor of Bethel Christian Church, urge Sunland Development Community to revise the assessment of their taxes on vacant land listed above, which are not yet built. At the time of the agreement, I assumed I would be able to build within the timeframe of two years. Gentlemen, as you know, the cost of building in this part of town is extremely high. Nevertheless, I would like to build my retirement home here. I have consulted many contractors, home builders. I am now, I am in the process of making a final decision to build, but the excessive increased cost on the taxes created a hardship in my budget. Therefore, I urge the community to change the classification of the assessment of good lots from built to vacant lot. I and the church community that I represent thank you in advance and hope that this request will be granted." So just to give you some backup regarding this case, Mr. Jerome actually was one of the very, I believe he might have been the only one that participated in the district lot swap program, so he could have owned a lot east of Cortez in the back that may have been off a road, paid his assessments current, and traded it for an improved lot. Part of that agreement was that, within two years, if he did not build on that property, he would be assessed at the full improved rate with a home. And he did sign a consent agreement, there's a contract in place and documentation for his agreement, and that's why he's now being assessed at a full $700 rate versus the unimproved $350 lot rate.
Well, the issue about whether he built on that lot he swapped for is not an issue for us, so he signed an agreement to pay the assessment, the assessment's due, in my opinion.
I mean, he's been current up to this year, right?
Correct.
He signed the agreement?
He did pay, last year, we actually started the assessment at the...
At the residential rate?
So he's already paid one year, this will be his second year.
So he paid the $670 last year?
Correct.
Real estate's much more expensive in Brooklyn. Sell his home in Brooklyn, he'd be able to buy four, five houses down there.
Good point.
So we're gonna make a vote on granting him a reduction. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed?
Nay.
Nay, so denied.
I assume it'd be the same thing in comparison.
Right, so Item E is, Property ID 995, Bethel Christian Church, has the same exact letter. It's, the property's actually titled "In the Church's Name," but he is making the same request under the same guidelines. So there's no discussion, we'll go ahead and take the same vote again. A recommendation to approve his request. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed?
Nay.
Nay, so denied. Item Appeal F, Property ID 14383, Rosalyn Malcolm Spence. The appeal reads, "To whom it may concern, because of the hardship I am going through since the death of my husband and not able to work, please I am asking forgive the assessment fee and/or a chance to get started over again. Many thanks."
My husband passed away in 2014, and she hasn't paid since 2013.
Correct.
Do we know if she's made any, has she come to us before, or is this her first appeal?
I believe this is her first contact with the district to try and make some sort of arrangement.
I think I would have been more sympathetic if she had come to us three or four years ago when it actually happened.
Right. So it is an improved lot, it has water and sewer services.
So it has a market value, there's houses there, it's an improved lot?
Correct.
It has a market value, and she has a choice, so I would say, my recommendation would be to deny it.
I assume the lot, the lot is worth more than $3,900, isn't it? She could probably get more than that for the lot.
I would assume that she went down that road.
And couldn't sell it, you think?
Right.
Again, I'm sympathetic to her situation, but...
I think my recommendation would be, once again, I've already stated the district's standpoint on assessments themselves. There may be some inclinations to the penalties, but that could be something that could be handled internally once we respond to this appeal, to see if she's able to make some sort of one-time payment in order to offset some of those interests to get her back current.
Does the, just for my background, does the district have the ability to negotiate to resolve a back issue like this? Like, if she came in and said, "Look, I'll give you a check for $2,000, but I'd like to start over?"
We only have the ability to negotiate on the penalties.
Only the penalty?
Only the penalty. So we would make some sort of contact with Ms. Spence and see if we can do something to help her in that, that way.
We've done, well, we've done that, what, two or three times?
Yeah.
The board has given, we've worked out a deal, Omar worked out a deal, and we agreed to it, but it's on rare occasions.
Yeah.
So we'll take a vote to, once again, based off her recommendation, her appeal request, which is to forgive the assessment fee and start over. All in favor, say aye. All opposed?
Nay.
So three to one, nay, denied. Item, Agenda Item G, Property ID 8797, Beryl Duffy. Assessment Appeal reads, "Appealing to golf assessment as this vacant lot does not benefit from any maintenance or view of the golf course." So I've provided a picture of this appeal and the lot where it's located. This appeal has come before the committee for the last two years, as far as I'm aware. I believe both years it's been granted on her behalf. Last year was a two-to-one vote in favor for this property.
And this is just for the 10% of the golf cart?
Correct. It would be the $70 assessment, that's assessed to that property. Any comments?
I'd be in favor of granting the 10% because she doesn't have a view of the golf course. She isn't on the golf course, so...
Yeah, I'd like to see...
For that 10%, I would say, sure.
I'd like to see the district be consistent, so if we, my previous, the previous boards felt that it was right, nothing has changed, and the view is still what the view is.
Well, I think last year was some discussion about this issue, so we took the standpoint of, this property does fall where, once again, we're discussing view, the benefit isn't necessarily based on view, there's a lot of properties on turtle run, especially that people have bought in or own now that do not have a view and are not getting this benefit. So last year, my recommendation was not to grant it until we come up with some sort of formal process or guideline as to what dictates golf course property or not, because once again, you can't open a can of worms on turtle run where people are being assessed and they don't have a view per se of the golf course.
That's a good point about consistency.
So right now, everyone that borders the golf course, whether they have a view or not, does get assessed that $70 golf course assessment, whether, once again, whether we agree or not, but until we address it entirely, my vote or my recommendation would be to keep it consistent with the assessment as it...
Well, to make a change in how we do the $70 charge, what process do we have to go through?
So I believe that'd be board implemented, so we could either come up with some sort of definition as to what constitute, you know, a golf course lot and assessment, so once again, is that a view, is that property values, is that adjacent to the borderline?
So all of these properties?
All these properties, correct. All get assessed.
Are they charged $70?
Correct. And like I said, on deer run, it really, you don't have too many that fall into this circumstance, even these homes are being assessed, but on turtle run, you see a lot more of that scrub jay habitat that comes into play, and they're still paying for that.
Of all the homes that are in a situation like this, she's the only one that's...
She's the only one that's requested it, correct.
Has, I mean, I've never gone out there, is any, I mean, I know about where it is. That's 14 on deer, right?
This is, this is the backside of deer, so...
14, right?
Yes, 14, 14, 15, 16, 17, yeah, 14.
14?
14, 15.
I should have taken a look. Well, I think for sure we have to address what the meaning of a golf course lot is.
Correct.
Yeah, that should be a recommendation from us back to the board to clarify that and come up with a set policy that says, this is a golf course lot worth an assessment, and this is not.
Because I think all those woods are there, and it is not on the golf course, but if we've been treating it that way, to be consistent.
Yeah, that's where I am, you know, fair to one, fair to all, you know?
Right. Like I said, the neighbors, her neighbors are already being assessed and aren't paying that full assessment.
In that case...
And like I said, her turtle run's a little bit different than deer, but some of those issues may, may come down the road. I'm taking, we're only getting one appeal now, but it could be...
Your point's well taken.
So we'll, is there any further comment?
We've given it to her two years in a row, though, huh?
Correct.
I think that in itself is a little unfortunate because it takes, you're making an exception out of what should be a general rule, so...
Correct.
And chances are, if we change the rule or how we treat it, she's gonna get the exemption next year.
But so will everyone else that falls in the same category.
Then the assessments will go up because we don't get that revenue from all those homeowners.
We open up a whole nother can of worms.
Oh, dear.
I would, I would say, my vote would be nay with a, I'm sorry, with an apology.
So I guess if there's no further comments, we'll go ahead and take a formal vote on her appeal, which is granting the waiver of the golf assessment. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed?
Nay.
Nay, all right, so denied. Denied with an apology. Item Agenda, Agenda G, H, which is Property ID 14868, Jose Nori Martin. The appeal reads, "My assessments have gone up 75%, while the rest of my neighbors have gone up 3.8%. I believe that you are targeting me because of my four lots where my house has always been designated as acreage. The district is now saying that acreage lots will no longer be recognized. However, you are charging me higher rates at the $350 opposed to $140 for each of the lots that are not developed. The reason the district gives is because they are unified. This goes contrary to your idea of no acreage. When you say no acreage, you are also doing away with unification of lots, so you recognize unification of lots only when it's to your advantage. Please be fair." So I've provided a bill of this property, the assessment for 2018, as well as a diagram aerial from the property appraiser's website. This property was assessed last year at an acreage rate, which was eliminated from this year's assessment review. Now he's being assessed for four lots, and because they're unified, there's a unified rate, he's being charged the improved rate for all four lots. What he's contesting is the last two lots in the rear, he would like those to be assessed at the unimproved rate, which is 140 versus 350. So it would be a $210, $210 discount on each of those two lots for a total of $420.
She has the option of developing those two lots, doesn't she?
He does have the option.
I don't know what he's got to do with it.
No.
There's not much you can do.
When I think about this, and I think about somebody that wants to own four lots, that's fine. We have a neighbor that owns two huge lots and mows an acre of lawn, and that's his choice, okay? I would agree to the unified rate for this guy if he couldn't develop those back two lots into housing lots, but why should we give him a break on the assessment? And two years down the road, he breaks that into two lots and has somebody go over and put two houses in. I don't...
They're not on a road, once again, if he did decide to go down that path and develop them, then at that time, when he splits them out and develops them, we charge the new owner or that new house at the improved rate, so...
There's nothing you can do with those back lots, right?
It wouldn't stay at that rate. No, the only thing right now, basically the way it is, if he decided to develop them, would be, you know, put a pool in or a gazebo or shed or some shit.
But he couldn't, like, build a livable residence. What's that white line? I thought that was another street.
No, that's where a street's platted, but it's never been built.
So you would do $140 and $140, right?
Correct.
And then on the front, you'd do...
$350 for one and $700 for the other, so he'd get a $420 reduction in assessment.
So this guy's been current and all that stuff, he's good?
Correct.
Yeah, so...
I guess part of the recommendation also would be to, if he's treated at the unimproved rate, then all the lots in the same category, same circumstance would be treated the same as well.
I don't see, yeah, I don't see what you can do with the lots.
So if you go over left, two lots where, you know, those two owners have sheds or structures there, they would now be treated at a $140 rate. I believe there's four or five, yeah.
So if we, if we decide to do that, do we go back and tell these guys they get a rebate, or...
Correct. If they pay, we'll issue them a refund and credit their account.
And there's no difference whether they've improved it with a structure or...
Right now, there's no...
I mean, they're not houses, but they're structures.
Right, there's no definition as to what is considered improved or unimproved, besides being on a road and no access.
I think I would support this one.
That's kind of where my head is. I mean, as long as it's not a dodge that he's gonna, you know, develop it four years down the road and make 10 grand a lot or something.
No.
So as long as it's not that, I'd be in favor.
Well, if he were to develop it, we would then change the assessment.
Well, that's what Omar was just saying, maybe. The whole thing would change to the new...
So I'm gonna make a recommendation, take a vote on granting his request to make the two rear lots at the unimproved vacant lot rate, and also applying all other properties in the same circumstance for that to be applied as well. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Agenda Item I, Property ID 15127, Eric R. Vallejo. Appeal reads, "We would like an exemption on a retention pond behind my property on 7020 Schumacher Road. On the annual assessment, the area is approximately 55 feet by 134 feet or 27.5%." So Mr. Vallejo, I've provided an aerial map of his property as well, has what it seems to be like a retention structure on the back portion of his property, which, this allows him to, you know, develop on that property, so he's requesting that he get a credit back and not have to pay assessment on that, that portion.
I assume when he bought the property, he had the retention pond?
Correct.
So things really haven't changed, other than he's making a request?
Yes. Yes.
Well, the condition existed when he bought it.
Yes.
And he knew the rules, so-
No further comments, we'll go ahead and take a vote to grant the exemption. All those in favor? All opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Denied. Agenda Item J, property ID 5337 Gilberto and Carmen Rivera. Appeal reads, "Our house and lots are located in the back of Sunlake. Since we bought the property in 2011, we have been faithfully paying our dues for assessments. However, we do, we don't get the maintenance and services other areas in Sunlake get. Attached are pictures of my streets and surrounding areas. As you can see, they look abandoned. Can you imagine Sunlake Boulevard, the preserved Deer Run areas looking like that? Trying to understand the reasons why different areas in Sunlake are treated differently. I visited the district office, wondering if we were paying a lesser than other areas, lesser assessment than other areas. I was surprised to know that we, every homeowner in Sunlake are building the same amount of assessments every year. Is this fair? I don't think so. I'm tired of having to call or email the district office to beg requests for maintenance or security rounding. I respectfully request to receive the same care or, and regular maintenance in the back of Sunlake as other areas do, or the reduction of 50% of the yearly assessment charges to make it fair for the reduced services we receive. Recently, the assessment bill went higher, so I can't expect more equipment and more maintenance jobs being offered to be able to provide better services. Carefully view the enclosed pictures and tour the back of Sunlake so you can experience what I am telling you. I am confident that you will consider my petition. Thank you, and many God bless you all. I may God bless you all."
So it looks like this is a property held in trust, since it has a trustee?
I think that's the, I think he skipped one.
Did I miss one?
Yeah.
This lady actually has a home and is living there, right?
Correct.
This couple who-
No, sorry.
But they're out in, uh-
They are, east of Cortez.
East of Cortez, thank you. Which is basically not very much developed.
Right.
So she's showing, showing pictures of things that have been like this for a long time, right?
Right. I think there's some, you know, some road damage.
I mean, the sign, there's a picture of a sign that's down, which is a ditch, and the roads, I guess we should look at. But as far as all the other stuff, that's just the way it is. What is her assessment? How much is it worth?
I assessed it almost $700.
Seven hundred dollars, yeah.
And she's been current all along?
Yes.
I assume this has been going on, how long has she had the property?
2011.
2011?
Yeah.
So she's been paying since 2011 and keeping current, and?
She may have an issue with the amount of maintenance she's getting, but it's not an assessment issue.
So outside of a couple of issues with the road shot that she showed us, and that one sign that was down, that's really only our responsibility, isn't it?
Just the moilier that he's met, and-
Well, it's on, there's, the picture she shows, it's on an angle, it's not, so it just needs to be-
Could that would just be a maintenance guy going out and-
Yeah.
I don't, I don't see a case here, I mean, people have their eyes open when they buy the property they buy, and they want to live out there with no water and no, like, you know, that, that make that choice when they buy it, so.
Which I think it'd be beneficial if maybe someone from our ground staff, either George or Mike, go out there and tell her what she can expect, cause she sends an email here saying it's been more than six weeks since this area in back of Sunlake has not been given maintenance. So if we have some sort of maintenance where we come out there every so often, and she can expect that, as long as we're abiding to that, then if she understands what she's getting, what she can expect, but it looks like she doesn't know what she-
You make a good point, I think it's a question of what she can expect out there.
Right, looks like there's just some sort of communication issue that needs to be addressed.
Actually, I'm quite surprised she has the negative comments about her reaction, cause every time I've been to the office for security, or maintenance, or anything like that, it's been responded to, so.
Let's send somebody out there, but as far as her request, I don't think there's much, she's got much grabs for it.
So we'll go ahead and take a vote on her request, which is a 50% reduction in assessments. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed?
Nay.
So the request denied. Yep, Item Agenda K, property ID 14328 Sarah B. Ruiz, trustee. Appeal reads, "This site contains 3.1 acres of wetlands, and I have provided documentation to support this claim. I ask that you reduce my assessment for the unusable and unbuiltable land. Please reconsider my property tax assessment and in turn reduce the amount of property taxes I will have to pay this year. Your time and consideration is greatly appreciated." She has provided the permit, which expires October 3rd, 2019, which is issued by Paulson Engineering with the letter and swift mud. I believe this appeal has been presented three times, and granted two of the three, with last year being the first denial. Last year's appeal committee felt that it was a similar situation to the Vallejo case, or some of the other cases that were presented, where you may have some land that's unusable, but it was there when you bought the property, it was an already existing condition, so we took that standpoint last year. So this is another case where it's been, last year had a different outcome than prior years.
Well, I mean, she bought, she bought it with the condition being what it was. I don't know how you-
Nothing's changed since she bought it.
No.
And we don't base, that's the other point, we don't base the assessment on how much your property is good or not good, or, right? I mean, the assessment's the assessment.
We don't, what, do we know what she was asking for, other than a reduction? She didn't really spell it out?
She's just asking for that 3.18 to be backed out of her assessment, because it's unusable.
The assessment's not based on how much your land is usable, so.
Which I guess her only other alternative would be to, you know, deed that property to the district or the county, or someone where she's not being billed for it, since it's unusable, there's no point in keeping it in your name.
Do we tell her that?
No.
I think that's the thing, because it's not in a statute, you really can't tell them, look-
No, no, I'm not, I'm not making a recommendation, I'm just-
No, no, I-
Talking out loud. So we'll make, uh, take a vote on granting her request, which is a reduction of the 3.1 acres of wetlands. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed?
Nay.
Appeal denied. Agenda Item L, property ID 14317 and 14318, which is Brenmark Construction, Inc. Appeal reads, "Upon receipt of our final assessment, we noticed that the assessment of $1,212.75 was higher than the proposed assessment of $1,078. We were advised by the office that the increased assessment was caused by the inclusion of 50 feet right-of-way that fronts our property. This effectively increases the size of our property from .88 acres, as reflected in county tax rolls, and the amount used by Sunlake in prior assessments, to .99 acres, thereby accounting for the increased assessment. We strongly believe that the right-of-way should not be included in the final land tabulation, as this is not property we own and cannot sell. Calculations should be consistent with the county's treatment."
Well, the big question here is, is she owning it, is it theirs or not?
Correct, so I've provided a, almost a depiction of the property appraiser's website, which shows that their land does, you know, their strap and plot does cover that road easement, which is similar to a residential home, you guys owe us a butt backstreet. Now, the district owns the easement, but you're able to cut and mow your yard all the way up to the road and maintain it and take care of it, it's your property, we just have access to that easement for services. This case, all the properties adjacent to it, once again, they all overlap that road, and all get assessed for the right-of, to the road. Looks like there was just an inputting accounting error in our database that we caught during, during an audit review, which caused the increase. But other than that, it's treated at the same rate as everyone next to it. So this, that change that was implemented was to get it consistent with everyone else.
So all the other property-
Why do we, and this is just a curiosity question for me, why do we treat those right-of-ways differently than the county tax guy? It's just, that's the way we've always treated them, is that the-
Well, I would assume it's based, cause we don't, you know, I'm assuming the county takes it more of a value type base, so we're just, once again, we're just doing it for the lot size.
Acceptance has nothing to do with-
Yeah, we're doing it based off lot size and how much you own versus, we don't care if there's benefit there, or value, or add-on cost, or so it's-
Right. Yeah, that's what kind of, depending, kind of, alright. But I think it's pretty straightforward, then.
So, denied his request would leave it consistent, everyone would be true to the same. A granting of his request would make us change the entire process for everyone across front of the road to eliminate or back that out of the assessment. So we'll go ahead and take a vote based off his request, which is to exclude the right-of-way. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Request denied for both properties. Any public comments? Meeting adjourned.